We'd like to call the Wall City Council October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting through orders. Carolyn, would you please take roll call?
Here.
Oregon?
Kinda, here.
Dan Anderson?
Here.
Tuesday.
Here.
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 Mike?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Let us stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mike, would you?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any order of business for emergencies, Carolyn?
No.
And do we have an attendance on Zoom?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, next on the agenda is to adopt the agenda, but I would like to propose that we move Garrett's report, which is item number twenty-one, up to right under the, well, it was gonna be under the S D M L speaker, uh, because, so that Garrett can be excused from the meeting. Would I have a motion to adopt that as proposed? Okay, standing has moved, Jerry has seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, with that then, uh, the next item actually is, this week we hired a new attorney, and at this point, Nathan, would you like to step to the podium and introduce yourself, please? We are so, so glad to have you here with us tonight.
Good evening, uh, thank you. My name is Nathan Chaquen. I practice at a small law firm in Rapid City. Commercial Jensen, Tom, his name is Huffman. I'm pleased to be part and help with legal issues for the council. Look forward to working on it, so.
Could you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Um, I've been practicing in Rapid for about eleven years. Before that, I went to the University of South Dakota Law School, graduated there in two thousand and thirteen, and prior to that, did my undergraduate at South Dakota. Lived in South Dakota my whole life. I born and raised, grew up in Pierre, um, and done some other municipal work in my private practice, um, and hoping to translate some of that into what the city of Wall needs.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, welcome. Okay, with that then, do we have any conflict of, oh, no, we're gonna go with Garrett. Let's do that right now, please, Garrett.
Thank you guys for having us. Last home volleyball game, so. Been busy with water leaks. Uh, we finally, I know I told you guys a while back how we had water coming up down by the sewer lagoons. Um, I dumped dye in sewer, it would come up down there, but sewer, no dye, and so I called the South Dakota Rural Water, and they have a trailer where you can pressurize the mains, and we narrowed it down, and we ended up finding a water leak on Second Avenue across from the Masonic Temple, which has been leaking for quite a while, and it just followed their sewer out to the sewer main, all the way down North Street and down over the hill, and it just surfaced down there, so. And then, of course, there was a sewer right next to it encased in concrete, so we had to cut that out and chisel it out to fix it, but should be all done with their water leaks for a while, but. I think in the next probably five years, we're gonna need to be very aggressive on getting rid of that AC pipe and, and because we're just gonna keep on having more and more issues, because it's getting, I don't, Dan, when do you think that was, oh, we put in?
Yeah, and, and one thing about that old AC pipe is, is the warm water makes it deteriorate that much faster. So.
I have, I have a question. What's AC pipe?
Asbestos cement.
Oh, okay.
So, and it's, it's safe to use as, yeah, the end of this, the state knows, is aware of how much we have, and every time we take some out, we let them know, and then that's why we do, we do water samples for all of that, too, so, so it is safe, you know? So, and I'm just gonna get a map drawn up of what I know is and what I think is AC, and then we can start, you know, maybe doing, you know, sections at a time to get that taken care of, so it's, you don't have it anymore, because it always happens. We have a leak here, then up there we have a leak, you know, and it just, it's just nonstop.
Okay.
Most of it, I think, a lot of it is on the, would be on the north side of Fourth Avenue is the majority of it, you know, going up, going like to the park, and then over where we were on Second, and then part of it is from the south side of Prayton to the process and plant up there, so. And there's a few spots that I don't really know about, but it could be like maybe two blocks or something, but I don't get all that measured out and everything, but.
Did you have to hire help, your, or?
Not on this one. I don't know if Rural Water will chart us or not, but. I don't know.
They were very helpful, though. They were down here a couple of different times to help you figure that out, thank goodness.
I'm finally getting something else done. Transfer stations gonna be open on Thursdays from two thirty, and I would suggest probably making appointment also, so if anybody out there wants to use the transfer station, call Sander, leave a message, and then they'll tell Gary and Gary will be able to view. I mean, you should be there Thursdays, but it's not.
So it's, it's a time on Thursdays?
Twelve.
Noon to two.
Noon to two thirty.
So, and in the past, he's always been good. If you call and make an appointment, he, he's there to open it up for you.
And where can people find that phone number to call?
It's on your can.
Yep, it's on every trash container or waste container around town. Okay.
We got the blade fixed, we got the back trunk fixed. Intern. Dad Anderson's doing a great job, a lot of help, willing to just jump in and try. Good to have him on.
Okay.
He really likes it.
And did one of our guys also take a test recently and?
Yeah, I don't think, Gary took a reswater test. I don't know if he has any, but it sounded like he might have, because we didn't. Came for the exam yet? Okay, and then he also wanted to take one. He'll probably have to get it. Wants to take a one-day class in Mitchell. Then he also wants to take a test November twenty-first, and that'll be in Rapid City, so.
Okay.
Be a three-day class and exam.
Okay, so you'll work with him on that, it's?
Yeah.
Does he approach us?
Yeah, he said it's October twenty-fourth.
Okay.
And what's that for?
Um, state legislation, so.
So is that up for a certification, or is that just updates?
Just for information to take the exam, so you know. And then the, well, I'll have to talk to him about driving down there. He said he wants to take his, we'll figure that out.
Okay, all right, anything else?
Third, well, if I can. Did Mary give a chance to talk to you about, um, on Sixth and Joiner Street, there's a hot hole that's starting to form, we got a TV wide.
Yeah, she mentioned Sixth. Is it by the?
Those apartments.
Is it farther in, like by the entrance to it, or just along the right there?
Right, when you turn off Sixth, right there at that intersection.
There's two, one's starting to form, and then there's one that's bigger, and resident approached me about this, and I went and looked at what I thought they were talking about, all down the street, so. I just drove right over there. I will look at it, so, all right, thank you.
Okay, good job. All right, anything else? Okay, so that'll put us back on the agenda then. Does anyone have, good night, good luck to them. Uh, does anyone have a conflict of interest to declare this evening?
Our speaker is.
Oh, perfect.
He's not hearing us, I'm not sure what to do. Um, so you can't hear us, Sam?
Okay, this speaker is with South Dakota Municipal League. Uh, he's actually their attorney, and he was on a panel at South Dakota Municipal League, and the, the conversation is about I M twenty-eight, which is the grocery tax, is another name for it. And we wanted to try to bring as much information to our citizens as we could. You also in your packet, and also on that back table, is printouts of the initiated twenty-eight measure. Speaks about the pros and the cons. Uh, the panel that we heard was a legislator. This gentleman, this attorney, uh, the president of South Dakota, or the executive director of South Dakota Retail Association. So they were very informed and had a lot of information that they shared with us, and.
You said he might try calling in, because you're still not hearing us, Sam?
I can hear you guys now, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, starting, yep.
All right, good deal.
Freddie, for you, we're, got to that part of the agenda, if you wanna just jump in and?
You, you bet. Well, hey, first, my apologies for getting crossways, um, on time, folks, this evening. I was out in my back garage putting up strongbacks on my floor joists. When my wife came out and reminded me I had a meeting, and then I got a text from you, so I owe you guys an apology, and I'll try to make it up to you by being brief, uh, and I'll be available to answer questions both now and then at a later time, uh, if you guys need to speak with me about anything we talk about tonight. So, um, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Sam Nelson, and I am uh, a lobbyist for the South Dakota Municipal League and a number of other organizations in Pierre, and then I also uh, serve as their general counsel, and so I have been working with Sarah Rankin, the Municipal League Director, and my dad Larry, who lobbies for them, Nate Sanderson, and a number of these other coalition members in opposition to I M twenty-eight. Um, and if you've been following this, you'll, uh, you'll agree with me that there has been a lot of talk and a lot of confusion about it, and what it may or may not do to cities. So I wanted to just give you folks an overview of problems that I think it, it has both directly for cities and then indirectly, uh, because of what it could do to state budgets and some of the other um, budgets that it will impact. Um, I sent a memo to Sarah Rankin, and it may have been provided to you folks at the city, but it kinda gives a history of I M twenty-eight, and the point I'd like to make with the history is twofold. First, there were a number of changes to initiated Measure twenty-eight before it actually got onto the ballot, and the very first forum that was submitted to the Legislative Research Council would for sure have removed the city's ability to tax. Um, the Legislative Research Council is tasked by statute with providing feedback anytime somebody submits a ballot measure, and some of the feedback they provided to Mr. Wieland and his group was that they should use certain definitions, uh, specifically food and food ingredient that were already in statute, if they wanted to be absolutely clear uh, in explaining to folks what they were and were not trying to tax. And for reasons unknown to me and a lot of the other opponents, Mr. Wieland and his friends decided to use the phrase human consumption, which, um, is fraught with, with problems just because of what it means and what it doesn't mean, and what it could include or not include. Um, and so it's pretty well-established that tobacco is, is an item that's for human consumption, and that, as you've seen before, probably, uh, as you know, is gonna jeopardize, uh, the master settlement agreement with the tobacco companies from years ago. We don't know what human consumption means, and that's a problem for us. In addition, the measure says that municipalities can continue to impose taxes, but that's in direct conflict with S D C L ten dash fifty-two dash two. Mr. Wieland has argued that, um, you know, the new law would super, supersede the old law, and that's certainly possible. But he asked through his attorney, he asked the South Dakota Attorney General to put that the cities would still be able to tax in the Attorney General's opinion, which is on the Secretary of State's website, and the sec, uh, the Attorney General declined to do that. So that tells me that it's uncertain, uh, that we don't know for sure. Uh, and, and when you're talking, you know, you may have heard Mr. Wieland and, or his attorney, or some folks, talk about things like rules of statutory construction, and the, the most recent law prevails, et cetera. Those things are true, but when you're talking about those concepts, what it means is, in essence, you're already litigating, and so it's kind of a concession by the proponents of the measure that what the Attorney General said is actually correct, that there's gonna be judicial or legislative clarification that's necessary. In other words, we're probably gonna have to go to court, and we're probably gonna have to go to the legislature to sort out all the problems created by the poor drafting of initiated Measure twenty-eight. And then the last point that I'd like to make, uh, to you folks, before I, um, open it up to questions, if you have any, is that even if Mr. Wieland is correct, and cities are somehow still able to tax under the new measure, we have a really big problem that's created with respect to S D C L ten dash fifty-two dash four. And that's a provision in state law that says, as it relates to sales tax, sales and use tax, if the states and cities both collect it, uh, that tax will be administered at the state level by the Department of Revenue. As you folks know, that's how it works currently in Wall. Your sales tax goes to Pierre along with the state money that's remitted by businesses in Wall, and then it is administered back to us by the Department of Revenue. If state sales tax goes away, it's arguable that the state and the Department of Revenue no longer have to administer the taxes on behalf of the city. Ten fifty-two four does say that we can contract with the Department of Revenue for the administration of taxes. So it's possible that we could still do that, but I think it's highly likely that if this thing impacts the state budget to the tune of several million dollars, as the projections say it's going to, you're gonna see cuts across state government, and that will most assuredly uh, include the Department of Revenue. They're not gonna have the people. Secondly, is Department of Revenue going to want to contract with us, uh, to administer taxes, and I, and I don't know that they're going to. So then that leaves cities like Wall and Canton and Beersford and a lot of the other little towns from where I'm, I, I live, uh, with the option of, well, we can either contract with the Department of Revenue, or, or if we can't, our finance officer collects and adminis, and administers taxes on their own, and uh, I don't need to tell you folks who are involved in city government that, um, the finance officer in little towns is actually like a Swiss Army knife. I, I mean, they do, they do anything and everything, and so to try to have the finance officer be a tax collector as well, particularly for our smaller town, is gonna be a pretty big burden. And so, uh, those are kind of the points I wanted to leave you with, is that I don't know that we can tax for certain. The fact that there's uncertainty is a good reason to oppose this. Even if we can continue to tax, it's gonna create problems with administratively how we do it and the rest of the state budget. And then lastly, you guys all know this, too, we get a lot of help and assistance from the state directly or indirectly through different programs, grants, community services, et cetera. Those things have to be on the chopping block. Um, if the amount of money that this thing is gonna cut out of the state budget is correct, and I, I've looked at the L R C's estimates, and I think they are correct. I think that this is going to really substantially change the way state government functions, and so that's why the league is opposed. I'm opposed personally, for whatever that's worth, um, and I would respectfully suggest you folks should be, too. I think, I'm just gonna look at my numbers here. We've got, um, sixty-three coalition members uh, that are opposing this at this time, and there are seventy-five cities and towns that have passed a resolution explaining why this is, uh, will have a negative impact on, on state budgets. So that's the information I have for you folks. If, if you have any questions for me or any thoughts, I'd be happy to chat.
Is it a fifty percent vote, or sixty, or just a majority vote?
To change this, um, to change this statute, it's an initiated measure, so I believe the vote would be fifty percent of the registered voters voting in the election. I may be wrong on that, and I can get you that information for certain.
Sam, what, what's the estimate of what it'll take out of the state government's budget? Just a ballpark?
It's a, it, it's a pretty wide range. It ranges from a hundred and forty-some million to over four hundred million dollars. Um, and, and part of the reason for the wide range is we just, we don't know exactly what human consumption means, but in my opinion, there's fairly good consensus on the fact that it means more than just food and food ingredients, um, typical items that a, a human being would eat.
So cigarettes and alcohol wouldn't be taxed?
Alcohol and prepared food would still be taxed, but the drafters did not specifically state tobacco would continue to be taxed, and when you look at the definition of a, of what tobacco or cigarettes or e-cigarettes are, the phrase consumption is in those definitions in statute, and, um, that's, that's part of the problem created by this. Tobacco, cigarettes, e-cigarettes, those are items for human consumption, and the measure says the state will not tax items uh, that are used for human consumption.
Hey. Any other questions? Very serious situation, for sure. So, okay, hearing no other questions? Okay, thank you, Sam, for taking time to visit with us tonight.
Yep, and thank you guys for having me, and my apologies for, for being a little late.
That's okay, we worked it out.
All right.
All right.
Take care.
Okay, thank you very much.
Bye.
Okay, so that brings us to the point on the agenda then to, uh, I will ask for approval of the minutes for the October third, uh, two thousand and twenty-four city council meeting. Okay, mic is moved. Zach seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Also, in your packet were the city bills, the fire department, and library. The city bills tonight, uh, represent a total of a hundred thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. The total of the fire department is sixteen thousand four hundred and twenty-three. And the total for the library is two hundred twenty-three dollars and fifty cents. Is there any questions on any of those claims? Would I have a motion to approve the City of Wall Fire Department and Library claims?
The move.
Dan moved, and Zach seconded. Jerry, okay, Jerry seconded. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, in your packet also, uh, for your review, was the ambulance, uh, financial report for both the month of August and September. Also was the golf course, uh, financial report. The sales tax report, which again is interesting, sales tax is a bit down, but BBB is up. The budget report, the expense budget is included. And also for your review is the building permit for Dairy Queen to change the roofing material on their, uh, building. Any comments or questions on any of those items? Okay, hearing and seeing none. This moves us on to item twelve on the agenda, which is public comments. At this time, it's a time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns with any issue on or not on the agenda. However, action will not be taken until it can be added to the next meeting's agenda, and each person will have three minutes to address, um, their concerns, and Dan is our timer. Is there anyone in the, our audience this evening that would like to make a public comment? Yeah, yes, sir. Would you come to the podium and identify yourself? Oh, okay.
Hello, everybody, mayor, council, city employees, and remote viewers. Thank you for your time and consideration. My name is John Destry, and if anyone wants to know how it's actually spelled, it's K A N, it's French. I don't know by John. Anyways, I'm here to address, speaking on Fourth Avenue. And, uh, I'm not looking for any revolution at the moment. I would like to thank Jerry, if he put out word to the truckers, they seem to be behaving quite well.
I have signs in all my facilities.
For the most part, they have really improved. Eric put out signs, I wanted to thank him for that. And I lied to those people from, I won't say that. Our eastern neighbors do not recognize the color orange. They don't, they don't even see those new flags. They don't exist. And we'd like the council to seriously consider putting speed bumps on that road. They are inexpensive, easy to install, easy to remove. People fly down that road at high rates of speed. I am on the street every day almost. I live there. I see them, and I interact with them. And I'd like to thank the deputies who aren't here, but I'm sure watching from afar for their efforts, but that is after the fact. They stop the speeders after the fact, and not before. I would seriously urge you to put speeds on that road. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, sir, for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to share some public comments with us this evening? Mark?
Yes, I, I don't live in town, however, I do own properties, and, uh, I have a kind of a complaint. The, the Fourth Avenue reconstruction, I thought, went very well. except I ran into a problem on two hundred and nineteen, West Fourth Avenue, two seventeen and two nineteen both shared the large old driveway. That was the Crown Residence at that time. And a long time ago. And I wish Garrett would have been here, but instead of, they, they talked me out of putting concrete all the way up to the old concrete when they took out the old sidewalk and put in pink rock because they said it wouldn't drain properly. And the more I looked at it, they talked me into it and I wished I, I wouldn't have said yes. To be honest, to be quite honest. And I think we can go over, I, I could even prove with two-by-fours and a level if I have to. I don't want to transit, but I think it would drain. And I, I deeply, I'm deeply concerned about it because you go to Moalawn, you're going to be picking up pink rock and throwing it out. I don't want cars to be getting hit by it when we drive by. So that, that's my main concern. I would like it to be looked at and discussed further. One other thing I would like on, on Airport Road, which turns into one hundred and ninetieth Avenue. As we all know, that was the old highway. And I was on township board for twenty years, Lake Flat. And we had discussed how to try to alleviate the problem. As you know, old asphalt has a way of ripping up, tearing up, served its purpose. And the way we got by getting over that problem without too much expense, we kept it as a base, the old asphalt, and we put dirt on top. A good amount of dirt, and then we covered it with, with gravel. But the gravel we had was from the impulsive pit and didn't have enough binder, of course. And so I, I lined up and we got some dirty P-rock from Rushed Delight. I mean, I'm just telling you all this as to what we did. I'm not telling you how that you have to do it. This is how we solved the problem. It all bound in very good and it has lasted for over twenty-five years, twenty years. But it's starting to also give away. You're going to run into, anytime you put gravel over asphalt, you're going to run into washboards.
Okay, so we're about, you've used your three minutes. So perhaps what would be a good idea is for you, if you, if you want to discuss this further, first of all, contact Garrett. That would be a possibility. And secondly, fill out a, a gender request and you could put this on the.
If you have one and I can fill it out and get to you on it. But if you get a chance, please drive your road and take a look at it, see what you think.
Okay.
And they, the city department has done a wonderful job in their works, by the way.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time.
Always good to hear something positive.
Thank you ever so much.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Have a good evening. Okay, that brings us to item number thirteen, which is approve the second reading of the ordinance twenty-four oh-two, which is revision of the ordinance. Again, we're talking about what we've done with this in this part of our ordinances after we, our zoning is in effect and we took some of what we needed in the zoning out of what we had before. And so that's why the revision was necessary. So you have a, a resolution in your packet and the effective date is that this would be the second reading and then it would be published October twenty-fourth, again on October thirty-first and would go into effect November twenty-first. So with that bit of information, is there anything you wanted to add, Carolyn, to any of that?
No, once it's in effect, then it'll go out online and replace the one that we currently have.
Because our old one, and people actually are looking at that old one for, for information. So the sooner we can get this in effect and on there, the better our information communication flow would be. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance twenty-four oh-two.
Don't move.
Okay, Dan has moved. Zach has seconded. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, that brings us to our superintendent report, which would be Dr. Kraus, Krauser. Welcome tonight.
Thank you. It seems we go hard and fast. Homecoming went really well last week and weather held out for us. And I want to thank the city for your heart that you take in it. Our parade was one of the better parades, they say, that we've had. I have even more ideas for next year, but I appreciate all the businesses that participated this year. So thank you for that and all the stuff that comes in the city with having a parade. And we just do that in a loop, but we did it twice and held up traffic coming off that exit probably for a little while, but thank you. Garrett mentioned internship, but I know there are several businesses in town and around this area that have taken my interns. And I say mine because I have taken on that class. And so all of our kids are out working right now, either one hour or two hours a day or they're making up the time on Friday mornings or Fridays or however they can make it work. And today, one of them even said, I'm having so much fun. I'm only in the class for an hour, but my grades are good enough. Can I use my study hall also to stay there longer? And she's at the clinic and so, so that's fun. I know I talked with Mary and it's maybe on your agenda. Yeah, the tree thing. And all I want to tell you about the tree situation from our end is last week, our board approved to pay three thousand dollars on a five thousand dollar project. And we were hoping the state would pick up the, or the state, the city would pick up the rest so that we can transfer those trees. And I want for the life of me to make them live. So even if we don't have a major deadline as when to have them out of there. So I guess if we're falling into the wintertime and we need to wait till spring, I'm, I'm happy with whatever. I'd like to save them and move them. I do want to just say one thing about the, that I am twenty-eight. I believe our associated school board, the state associated school board is, would you call them a coalition member? They have, they have made it plain or whatever you call it to oppose that. I am twenty-eight because of the amount of money that it's going to take out of the general budget, which will be for our schools. And when that happens, you know where the, the rest of us pick up the, for schools, it picks up, the private property picks up the rest of the ticket for that. So anyway, I know that that has been a hot topic with our superintendent conferences and such that we have had. That's all I have. Do you have questions?
Somebody brought up that we're returning to the school there. A lot of kids ride their bikes up the South Boulevard coming in.
Yes.
And everyone is like, maybe there could be a crosswalk or something put there.
There is a crosswalk.
Right at the south side?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we walk it.
From the sidewalk onto the sidewalk by the school.
What about going across South Boulevard?
Oh, across the South Boulevard?
Because you have, you have kids biking in
From the north.
From the north side and then they're going to turn in and they like, yeah, just kids.
Are you talking like at the railroad tracks from that where?
Oh, from the railroad tracks to the.
West.
Yes, to the west.
I think that's right. I mean, there was one mask between kids out from school today that there was a couple of bikes crossing right there and not looking in. I mean, it is a spot that was a little scary. It would be good to have that.
Wouldn't.
And I have to talk to the state.
I was out to state, yeah.
Is that a state road?
Yeah.
The exit is. Because we are the road right there. Yeah, that's not our property, the South Boulevard. And, and we're wanting one across South Boulevard, right? Because there, yeah, there is one.
On the school.
On the school, right, right. And that's what I, we're talking about, but.
Would this school be interested in contacting the OT?
I was going to say, if I contacted, I'd be happy to.
Yeah.
Department, yeah, DOT.
Would that be Mike Carlson?
Oh, yeah, Mike Carlson's the engineer. They have someone in charge of that, which I could find that on too, but Mike Carlson would be a good person.
Yeah, that's, that, because I have noticed there are quite a few kids that ride bikes and.
So he's going to be here November fourth to have a conversation with us. And you know what? We better make sure you come to that.
Yeah.
You come to that party too. November fourth and I believe it's nine o'clock in the morning. Failed to write that down on this note, but November fourth.
Thank you.
That brought my attention today.
Yeah, no. Catch me in, you guys, my door is always open and the phone works. So any questions? Don't be afraid to hold. Things are good.
Keep up the good work. Thank you, Dr. Krauser. Okay, that brings us to an ambulance report, but I'm not.
Thanks, Zach.
Oh, thank you. I did not know that. Yes, Zach.
City and councils, I'm Al Kieran, secretary for the Wall Ambulance. We had fourteen calls for September. Two were canceled, four refusals, eight were transported. We had a few football standbys as well. We had one employee resign and we're looking to add to the crew one to two new employees. And Rapid City Fire is also working on a grant and using the Wall Ambulance as a pilot project to provide EMT classes in Wall. So it would be based here and along there. Yeah, they're working on grant for that, so.
Okay, very good. Okay, chamber report.
Hello, everyone. I think your community center reports for the final one for September. Running one October should be in your packets. Does anybody have any questions on anything on there? Then you can get busy. Haven't heard anything from the wrestlers yet, but that should be coming here soon, I think. And then I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who came out for homecoming appreciation supper last Friday night. Beautiful evening and we had a great turnout, I think. And also really a big thank you to Western Electric. They again brought their grill and supplied their handy griller. So we really appreciate them. And as a side note to that homecoming parade, Zach, I've never seen anybody hand out bacon, so good idea there. I love creative ideas.
No, all the crowds, Chicago.
Twenty twenty-five chamber membership invoices. I just finished them up just this afternoon. So those should be going out tomorrow and so people should be starting to see those in the next few days. They are not due until the first of the year. The Wall Community Craft Fair is November second from ten to three. And I believe they're just about full as far as vendor space. I had a couple more come in and I need to do a little bit more double checking, but we're just about there. So we do have some vendors that are coming in this year. So looking forward to seeing what they're going to be bringing. And the VFW is going to be doing their Turkey Bingo again here in this room. I haven't heard for sure exactly what hours. I've been saying ten to two and Wayne just about ran me out of my office and we don't do Turkey Bingo from ten to two. So that he must have thought that sounded like a really long time, so I'll get that figured out. And then the Methodist Youth Group is going to be doing concessions this year. So that mountain, even if you're not a craft fair goer, come out and support you. It would be awesome. The Parade of Lights is going to be Friday, November twenty-ninth with lineup at five thirty and parade at six P.M. This is different. We had originally scheduled it for the night before Thanksgiving, which is a Wednesday. And immediately, we started getting a lot of complaints about, hey, we're getting off work and we're going to be raised at home to cook dinner for Thanksgiving and what do you have thinking? So we just decided to roll the punches and get it changed before we got too far into it. So the, I forget what Rapid City calls theirs, but that's Saturday. So we did check that out. So ours is Friday. And then we are trying to think of something that we can do afterwards, but that's still in the works. So hopefully more on that next time. But yeah, Friday, November twenty-ninth, five thirty. You don't have to register, so just show up at the school parking lot. And then the annual pancake supper, which I've determined is my favorite minute of the year. It's set for Wednesday, December fourth. It's at Waldorf Store and it starts at five P.M. Pretty sure Mr. and Mrs. Claus will be there. So yeah, I think that is all that I have for tonight. Does anybody's got any questions? All right, thank you.
Sounds busy, sounds busy. Okay, item seventeen, permits. First item is a building permit for Jordan Drew's and he is going to build a fence. We have some comments on this, Carolyn?
Well, I hadn't had a chance to ask Garrett if he had reviewed it. He's been a little busy with the water situation. So he said the material and all that looks good. He said he will go out tomorrow to make sure that what they have lined out on the map is within his lot lines. So I guess if you want to prove it, pending Garrett reassuring the location for the outlines, that's up to you.
Okay. Okay, the front of the house is, yeah, is right here. And this DW I think stands for driveway. So your front door is right here. Gloria Street runs down here. So this is the front of your house, so it's not coming to the, the chain link is not going to be in the front yard by any means. Would be behind the driveway and probably the garage if they ever build one on there, so. Jerry has moved. Okay, okay, Jerry, not good at multitasking, so. Okay, and Stan seconded. Any other questions or concerns? And the motion is on the condition that, that Garrett, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. And so then, next on the item is on a sign request for a banner. And just because it is so interesting and we need to pay attention to our ordinances, I did run off copies of the banner ordinance to pass those around. Okay, so this is a request. The size of the banner is three by ten. And if you could help us, Carolyn, why did you think that needed? Because as rule, this should go to the sign committee, but what brought it to the city council? Did you share that with us?
Well, it says right on the application that the maximum time allowed to be displayed is two weeks. I was not in the office when he brought this back in, but maybe asked if we planned for the two weeks and he said he wasn't sure, so. I don't know if you guys wanna grant a variance for longer or do you wanna say, no, two weeks, that's it, or how do you wanna do that? Give interest. Month or whatever you wanted to do. That's beyond my decision.
I mean, like, that's city property. I don't think there couldn't be. Allowing. Banners suddenly, then they can be putting them on any city property, wouldn't it be pretty unprecedented? And also, he's not here. It must not be terribly important.
Had he indicated he would be here, we know.
He didn't. Yes, but you know, what does that say?
Do we know what the banner's for?
The banner is to advertise that the property is for sale.
Or rent.
Or rent.
Sailor. That's on the Budweiser Bud Light.
Yeah, that's the other thing. It's not just for sale, it's a Bud Light.
Bud Light, yeah.
It's a Bud Light, Budweiser, Bud Light sign. And pizzing beer. And again, isn't that not, he wants about our city, the city fence.
I mean, we do, like during rallies, um, there has been food, banners for.
On the fence?
Well, no, no, I'm saying they are alcohol banners, you know, Budweiser, whatever, and that they say, you know, welcome bikers or whatever and.
But that's on.
Business property. Yeah, exactly.
Question for our attorney.
Uh, well, and what? I'm ready to face, but like, very, where can we start something? Would that be, so that's private property. He's one that advertised, so what's to say that Jerry Johannesen wants to put a banner up there advertising his building for sale? In November. I mean, it's the same. It's the exact same thing.
But he's also unable to show his property because it's blocked off by that, because like most would have like, if there was a building there, there'd be a sign in his store saying, you know, for sale. Or if it was an empty line or wasn't one, then people could see a for sale sign on it, but people just can't see.
Well, he could probably put a sign in his property, but that would be very, very about the fence, I suppose.
Because help me remember when that fence was built after the fire. Was it the city that paid for the materials? Is that true? And the labor, um, also the city paid for the labor. And the fence, was it built on the lot line or is it on on Jim's?
Well, that was my understanding that it was built on the, or it's on the sidewalk.
It's on the sidewalk side, so.
And it covers up when he doesn't take care of his property and his weeds and the city has had to do. Just graciously taking care of that themselves, have they not?
It would be, that would be true that the city has done that.
What I do, what Zach says is probably true. It's an hard for an advertised property, but.
So Nathan, Stan did ask if our attorney had an opinion on this, based on our ordinance, and I think you have a copy of that also, right?
Yes, um, I've been assuming that it's current. Um, from what I see in the sign ordinance, which is what's listed on the application. Um, I'm, I'm gonna, I gotta presume that Mr. Coats has, has looked at that. There are, this doesn't really fall into any of the categories. Um, it doesn't fall into the catchall. Allowed signs, um, because it contains a commercial advertising. And um, it doesn't fall within a temporary sign that that would be allowed, like the city might have already for a special event or charity or public service group. Um, and not directed by a government body. Um, so if it's not generally permitted, um. And it's also not generally prohibited, um, as far as I can tell. Um, so I think it's, um, that the council can decide what, if it's. Something to allow, but I think it probably should be on the property owner's property. Not on the three facing side, if that's on the lot lines, that seems to be um, outside of the owner's property. But if there were a pole sign or something, as I know somebody indicated within the lot line and extends over the um. Extends over the, the city's fence, then um, that may be permitted by, um, you know, if it fits the other requirements on that ordinance. Like, it seems like as it's presented, it probably doesn't fit within the ordinance.
Okay. Well, what? What are your thoughts, anybody?
Well, I kind of agree with the jury of. He didn't bother to show up to plead his case, so.
My only other concern on what I did say is. Other city property, do we have banners to go up during other times of?
Well, there's a chamber, there's a chamber sign up there, advertising wall chamber.
On that, on the same fence that we're talking about.
It's kind of like the welcome to wall signs.
Yeah, it's a chamber, welcome to the west.
Yeah, that's, that's it.
Yes, sir. Hey, does anyone else have any thoughts? Jerry and Stan have expressed their thoughts. Anyone else? So.
Could you not advertise in the paper? Or is he advertising in the paper?
He has a sign up by the. Fat boys, but that's probably for fat boys down here, but.
If it would be on his property on the backside, I mean, I know he won't give much traffic with it being on the alley side, but. If the backside of that is on his property line, we have put it there then and just not on the front side since that's on the city property side. Or until we can do that extended sign up.
Go, go higher.
Yeah, go higher than it.
Like, like maybe if he had two posts.
Yeah, yeah, that's over and not touching the fence.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it could be similar to a realtor sign or like, I mean, it could be bigger than that, that would be as great as well, the fence. I don't know what the fence is, eight feet probably.
Probably. What, how long do those metal pieces come? I don't think they cut any different.
I mean, you could be four by eight.
Well, so, so if you had two poles, twelve feet above the ground. And twelve feet apart.
Well, it's three feet wide.
Three feet high and.
I mean, three high, so he's just gotta get whatever that eight.
One thing, sorry, sounding like I'm changing my mind, but let him put it up for two weeks, take it down.
But we don't have our ordinance to do that.
I don't know, maybe s- suggest that to, to gentlemen, if he wants to post it. He could put in a couple of poles and, and put it behind the fence. Sure have high visibility and then it would, it'd still fall under the two week thing and if we wanted to. Grant a variance to let him run it for a month or whatever, we could do that.
Well, as uh, indicated in our ordinances, uh, usually they're pre-approved by the sign committee, so perhaps they would let him put it up for two weeks at whatever height you're talking about there. And then if he, uh, if he would like it extended, come back to the sign committee, which that would be Rick and Dan and myself. And visit about whether, you know, it could be sold by then and so no worries or um, whether we would extend it for another two weeks. And we could bring it back to the council, let you know what, what the sign committee decided with that. How does that feel?
Sounds good.
Okay, so now who can put that into a motion for us? Who can say what we just said?
Say so, will you?
Okay, so good luck.
I'll second that.
You say what, Marissa?
What did you write down, Carolyn?
Okay, so go back to the video and get it off the video because I don't know. Uh, anyway, the premise is that we would, um, having put up, get it above the fence and it can be there for two weeks. Then we'd go revisit with the sign committee, who's Rick and Dan and myself, and see if an extension is the appropriate thing to do.
And, and I think it should be not attached to the fence in any way. Should have its own support.
Really, the only thing that bothered me was if we were kind of setting ourselves up.
I agree, I agree. Well, and if he's gonna try to get it more in two weeks, he needs to take the Budweiser part of it off. Even if it's, because then it's fall, fall, I would assume, because then it falls back into your advertising to something else other than trying to sell your property, I would assume. What do you think?
Yeah, I think if he takes the advertising off and it's off premises, um, then it would be generally permitted pole sign.
I second that.
But.
Zach made the motion.
Zach moved. And who's?
I second.
And Rick seconded, okay? And so any other further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, okay, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, that brings us to a propane bid at a dollar forty nine.
Um, so they did reach out to me to see. Will we want to submit or request a bid and. I said yes and asked what it would be and they said a dollar forty nine a gallon. I looked up, last year, we purchased eight thousand gallons. At two dollars a gallon. But I did notice when they were billing us, um, all of the invoices, that. Oh, part of the motive was to get a summer fill on all the tanks at a dollar fifty nine per gallon. Well, it never changed at the dollar fifty nine and so I reached out to them and I said, you know, we did a bid for two dollars and they're. Well, but that's what it's at, or they would never charge you more than what it's at, so we got the propane all winter long.
Awesome. That's great, actually.
Even though we've been two, so, or that's what they gave us.
Who's the propane company?
Any.
Any?
So um, I guess the question is, how many gallons and?
Did we use up all eight thousand?
Yes.
Just do the same thing, I'd say.
Eight thousand at the dollar forty.
Did we have to get more after the eight thousand went off or after? Do you know?
We didn't. We just barely got out of the contract, so.
Eight thousand should be.
I'd make the motion.
Okay. Stan, Stan has moved and Dan seconded uh, propane bidding pro, or contracting propane. To be eight thousand gallons at a dollar forty nine. Any other questions? Or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries. Okay, uh, item nineteen then is the tree removal agreement with the school and Dr. Krauser just alluded to that. We did in fact get a bid from CSP LLC, AKA Haji Chris Amen. And uh, he has bid that at five thousand dollars and the school board did approve, since they, it was their idea to get those out of there, but they don't really wanna just pile them and burn them. They were willing to, to give those to somebody and so um. Garrett and I and the forester and Dr. Krauser uh, met and we found a great place over by the park and the pool where we could have a. Beautiful living green windbreak that would help protect the west side of the park and the pool. And uh, but they were hoping that our share, that if we would pay two thousand of the bid and they pay three thousand, so what I'm uh, looking for today is. And um, Carolyn has indicated there is money in the budget to cover the two thousand dollars. Garrett has figured out how to do it, where he's put it. He did go over there and clear some um, dying trees out, so he's got that space ready to go. And so what I would uh, ask tonight is if. You, if someone would move that we do participate with the school and cover the two thousand dollars. Okay, Zach has moved.
Good question.
Well, let's get a second and then we'll have a discussion. Okay, Mike, and now would you have some questions, Jerry?
Is that planted too, uprooted and then replanted?
Yep, he'll dig it up over there. Well, first what I guess he does is he goes over there by the pool in the park, digs a hole, goes over there, gets his tree, comes back, puts tree in. Goes back, back and forth.
He has a tree spade.
And it's a huge tree spade and we had talked about to NRCS, Eli does the same thing, but these trees are a little bit too large for his tree spade. And so, but this gentleman does it all the time in pier and has moved trees up around the Capitol and everything else, so he's been quite successful. He did tell us not to do it too early, but don't wait too late, so October is ideal. And the school wanted it done on Friday so that there wouldn't be like kids and people driving through the loop there, trying to get in when he's trying to get a tree up. And the public works is good with any Friday we wanted to work on it, so. Uh, and it sounds like moisture is coming, so that would be great, easy, easier digging, easier planting and, and uh. Then to go right along. Well, okay, let's, we do have motion on the floor. Is there any other questions?
And my question, I guess then too, she was kind of mentioning that it's been a little late in the year too.
She's just saying that if this gentleman can't get to the work right now, because he said October and November would be great. But we're gonna have snowstorm November tenth. You, you do know that, right? So we gotta get this done. But she's saying, you know what? If he can't make that happen, we're okay with leaving it till January because they are adamantly against killing those trees. They'd rather see him try to grow, so it's an effort on their part. Good question, though. Okay, with that being said then. We have the motions, right? We did do that part. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries. Now, what goes right along with this whole living windbreak that we're trying to do here is the tree grant. Carolyn spoke to that last time. She was in the process of applying or getting ready to submit the grant, but Carolyn, I believe you got that done, the completed, right? And the forester helped you with it, so it should good go. And what does your tree grant cover exactly?
So um, it's actually a five thousand dollar grant. They will pay five thousand. We have to match. They will pay five thousand, we have to match that. But that match can include. The calculation of wages of me completing this grant and the public works actually doing the work.
It's the same type as what the course got in the past.
So.
It's in kind.
Probably expense, you know, as far as like material for the mulching. That all has to belong with it and the fencing that goes around the trees to do that, so and there. Think I remember that, say.
But they're a little bigger than, they're not the little tiny ones, right?
They're four foot, they had to be four. Even the considered inch and a half. Inch and a quarter to an inch and a half.
I think the golf course has done that two or three times and I I'm not a hundred percent sure of this, but I think we've only lost like one of the trees.
Trees?
Put them in really good.
Okay. So anyway, we're getting a living windbreak there and I think that would.
I mean, just because we submitted the grant that we. Make the determination, but it's been submitted, so.
Okay. So. Moving um, on then, the finance officer report then.
I have been working on the budget a little bit, so along with that. We need to be looking at employee evaluations so that I can. Do include that. Increase in the budget if there is going to be one or how that might look. So um, we have a. I can damn well push it off committee. Any time for you. Probably want to do this sooner than later. So I don't know if like next week. Has anything for you guys or? And we'll get those evaluations sent out to the employees and.
That you're not, and what you're gonna do in the evaluations, Linda wanted me, she couldn't be here tonight. She wanted to know when the library staff.
And I've already answered her on that question. She didn't like my answer, I believe, so. I will let her know.
So that's what I'm supposed to tell her, you've been answered?
Not basically, really.
So you're talking the week of the twenty-first? Or the twenty-eighth?
Well. Either one, really, I guess. Next week I'm available one day, I think, so. It can be that next week, that if the twenty-third does.
Okay, so our choices are like the twenty-third? Or? The the week of the twenty-eighth?
Yeah, and that would be afternoon for both of those days because for Monday and Tuesday preferably. Because um. Meetings in the morning, so afternoon would be a better option.
Twenty-third works for me.
Twenty-third.
Would that one be morning?
That can be.
That would probably be the only time that it would work.
And what's the best time for you? Mike?
What do we usually give as a?
So.
Forty-five minutes per?
Yeah, because you, well, it depends. I mean. Public works kind of probably needs a little bit more because you have to talk to each employee plus then.
Supervisor.
So the rest of us are individuals.
Okay.
If that's I can do anything, seven, eight.
Okay. I will get those forms sent out and let people know that we will be scheduling.
I'll just text you the twenty-third.
Okay.
And then.
But this is only for the evaluation. Is that what she was asking about?
Yes.
Okay, because she asked me about the budget, actually.
No, she asked me about your values.
Okay, and my apologies, I just understood that.
So. Will we get any of that information ahead of time?
I can see if they can't get it through us, yeah, get to me.
Is that the price beat?
Yeah, that really helps. That's right.
I will be back into the office on the twenty-second, but it'll be later.
I mean, even if you just scanned them and shot them through email, that'd be perfect.
Okay, that's you have it for your next.
And that was the twenty-third, eight o'clock.
Yes.
Or Mike, were you talking about actually having them like ahead of that time, ahead of the morning?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I understood.
That the actual evaluations will start at eight.
Yeah.
Right, but you'll get the documentation soon.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, conference follow-up.
Well, it's really a great conference. It was uh. Celebrating ninety years, so they kind of. Went all out a little bit, Sioux Falls did an awesome job entertaining everybody. And um. They were good speakers. I thought I did, of course, don't think to attend everything, but anything that I was involved with was. Good vendors um. That, so, and you guys have your little. Momentum.
Mementos.
The the glasses are on behalf of the municipal league, but the candy came from the mayor.
Fun. Did you have to give a big speech?
Not a big speech, you know, the thing is, is that happens on Friday at the annual meeting and everybody's pretty anxious to go home, so you don't try to get real lengthy about this. They're not gonna listen to you anyway. And I know that, so. No, I just did my thank yous, so. She was a little more prepared for that one than I was when I kept finance off. So yeah, it was a great. And then um, the library has done some. Have their CDs to get better. And that got me to thinking that I shouldn't probably go to the cemetery, nobody really. They don't have a board, so to speak, to look at that, so. I did reach out to the bank and um. So the cemetery has. Five CDs. One of them is coming due November second, so just, you know, not that far away. And if we were to combine that one, we would lose a lot more money on that one. Um, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty-five cents. So we're just gonna leave that one set until it actually does. When it come due. The others, um, how it worked. When I was talking to Hope, one of them won't have any forfeit of money because it is coming due this month, but there's three of them. And they're like. Twenty-five dollars each that we would lose, but they're gonna come due till in twenty-five. So I figured the twenty-five dollar loss or forfeit is probably worth what we'll gain in interest. They're currently getting like point one five. The highest one is point three five. And we can roll them into seven month CD and get four percent.
Oh, boy. Yeah, much, much better.
Figured it.
Easy decision, yeah.
Doing that, but they need a copy of the minutes that you guys approved this. Doing this, so. I figured it would be an easy sell to you, but I would explain so that then make your mind to do that.
Okay, would I have a motion to roll? I think you said three. Um, CDs into one?
Actually, it's gonna be four into one.
Okay, four.
So you hold on, sorry, Jeff, that's now. Um, it'll be a total of sixty-four thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars that get rolled into one. And then this other one will be kind of offset, but I would assume. So seven month is four percent or you can go to a thirteen month and you get three and a half. So I don't really know why you would just stay with one, a seven short term, but. That's what I. Am planning to do with that next one.
Okay.
I don't. I don't think I have to have movement from you guys to do that, that's just renewing, but since these were going to. Come out early and there'd be a forfeit of money, they needed approval for that.
Okay, would I have a motion to approve?
There's a motion.
Okay. Jerry has moved.
Second.
And Dan has seconded. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Okay. Is that everything that you need then, Carolyn?
That is all.
Okay. So we already did public works, that takes us to the mayor. And yes, the South Dakota Municipal League was wonderful and um, it is gonna be great to have uh, our. Our Carolyn, President of the State, which although will mean that from time to time, she is going to be. Uh, need to be gone from the office, but we have great backup in Katie and Rochelle, so. We're good to go. The other thing that happened down there is while employees earned for the twenty-second time. Bronze Safety Award, which is presented because they have kept a. A safe workplace environment, they have done things to reduce liability and they save taxpayers um, dollars because. Of the um, loss, lack of loss or loss control. So I just wanted to thank our employees for making the effort. To do things safely and offer congratulations to our employees also. The sessions that I attended down there, uh, one was on crisis communication, so that if you have a weather event, there seems to. Be weather events around the nation, uh, some do's and don'ts and how you handle. Uh, media communications. Another part was social prosperity, that was another speaker. And he indicated that function of city government is working with citizens for the good of the community and visioning. Results and outcomes, so it's good to have some visions of what you want to do, like. I think the tree project is a course of visioning and trying to make things better for our park and our pool. Also, I attended one on artificial intelligence. Uh, some of that's good and some of it's bad, so that's something that is just, it's there and we're gonna need to deal with it. Uh, and yes, the panel on IM twenty-eight was excellent and that's why Carolyn and I thought it was important to bring this. That um, Sam Nelson, the lobbyist in tonight. And then I had a phenomenal tour of Sioux Falls on their in infrastructure. It was a two and a half hour tour. It was with the Public Works Director and the Planning and Zoning Administrator. And it was just, we just started, we went all the way around the outside and then through the middle. But to to listen how they did their streets, maybe they had a narrow street, so how did they? Widen that, how did they put medians in, what kind of a set of stoplights or going to those roundabouts? Uh, what you do when you're a school district that runs right up to your city limit? And decides to build a school there, a big school and you're. The streets that are there. Aren't gonna be able to accommodate that, so how you throw things into high gear and get a street there anyway. We toured the Amazon building and that whole foundation park that's on the north side of Sioux Falls. Which is also where the Sanford campus is and it's, it's just phenomenal. It was just very interesting. As this public works director and the zoning administrator just talked us through all the different things. And they do have a lot of things going down there, going on down there and they really worry about staying ahead of Rapid City. I found that interesting, but. Um, anyway, that that's our big thing and they, their nose was a little bent because that thing that. Rapid City put in over here by Ramkota, you know, where you come off and then it goes this way and that way, and I think it's. Confusing as heck, but they really had their nose bent, that Rapid City did that before them, but. They're putting, they're putting one in down there now and it's, yeah, I just kind of got a kick out of that. So that's kind of what, it was just a great conference all the way around. It was also the most highly attended. They had four hundred and ninety-four attendees, the biggest one they've had. And maybe it's because it was their ninetieth and they do um, and Nathan, that is something we pay your uh. Your fees to be a part of municipal league and so there's a, next year will be in pier and uh. There's a, just a special part for attorneys. That you can attend those meetings.
Sorry, I remember, so.
Oh, well, very good. Well, we're not paying your fees. You just keep doing what you're doing. Well, we're glad to know that, you know that? We're really glad to know that, that you're part, that you understand what the municipal league is about and kind of what their function is. I already, or I may not have mentioned, Wildland Fire has come back to us and they want to have a meeting with us October twenty-ninth at nine o'clock with the Airport Steering Committee. Um, because they want to get serious about, okay. Let's talk about having a a site here. Remember when they came and talked to us before? And they got approval on their side, now they're coming back and they want definite approval for ours, from our side. And then, as I also mentioned, Mike Carlson reached out and he has set up a meeting on November fourth. Uh, with the DOT to review those contracts on. The snow removal and then that other one that I came across that was made in twenty fifteen and has never been. Um, looked at again and there's stuff in there that doesn't even apply, so why is, why do we have that? Let's see if we can't clean that up. So with that being said, that is my report. Is there any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
You're fired. Or that helped make the process from up there?
Oh. I I guess I don't know about that. Uh. Yeah, I guess we'll check.
Interesting comment.
Yeah.
Maybe they'd help or something.
Yeah.
You know, whenever here before, that one time they kind of talked about it a little bit, but I can't remember.
How that went?
I wonder if they'd have their own fuel tanks for themselves on later.
They supply all their own.
Sure's worth bringing up.
Okay, so are there any other items for discussion tonight? No action would be taken, but. Is there anything that anyone else knows that's going on or needed? Nothing, okay. So our next council meeting will be uh, November.
Seventh.
Seventh. I wrote all over the top of that, I couldn't even read that. Okay, November seventh at six thirty. Uh, with that being, and Stan, will you still be here or will you be zooming? Okay. You'll be zooming, okay.
There's really a snowstorm coming on the.
Tenth, I gotta get out of here.
You've got to get the heck out of town.
I'm actually leaving the twenty-seventh, make sure.
Okay, that sounds good. Okay, with that being said, Nathan, is there any other comments that you wanted to make or? We very much appreciate you coming down and letting us introduce you to the community.
Yeah, I'd be on board. I've got a kind of a draft contract um. That I often look at and mark up and. I don't know if you want to approve it at some point or or what, but you did need something in writing signed, but I mean. I'll do that and then um, I'll take it up to. He said we could mark it up and we mark it down. You can propose to change it.
So, okay. Yes, send us that agreement, we'll put that on the agenda. Should we do the oath? Cause you do have that ready?
I didn't print it.
Okay, it's not printed yet. So you bring that agreement back to us and uh. We'll do the oath and um, sign the agreement at the same time. And uh, we'll let um. We'll review the, the agreement and uh, and put that on the agenda then. For the next meeting. Thank you. Okay, anything else? Okay, I will declare the meeting adjourned then. You're welcome.
Oh, Mary, that was me. I would change that on me not expressing a green in the middle and I'm.